Good evening. This is the conference meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township, held at City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 7:14 PM. Roll call, Councilman Cooley.
Present.
Councilwoman Easton.
Here.
Bring your microphone close to you, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Hilbert.
Present.
Councilman Montague III.
Present.
Councilman Ross.
Here.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson.
Here.
Council Vice, Council President Wooton is absent. Also present is Tricia Cipio, Chris Hartwig Business Administrator, Derek Brown Fire Chief, now Clements Financial CFO, Garcia Armentela City Attorney, Marlon G. Towns Legislative Research Officer, and Brian Mooney Police Chief. Can we have a moment of silence? Thank you. Please be apprised, anyone wishing to discuss agenda or general items shall sign their name on the comment signup sheet and will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to interact with council. Sunshine Law, the requirements of NJSA 10:4-9, it says Sunshine Law has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in the Record Transcript on Thursday, July 10th, 2025, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, the council's website, the city's website, and filed in the office of the city clerk. We'll now have matters of discussion. Our SS County update with our SS County liaison, Reginald Bledsoe.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
For the record, Reginald Bledsoe, SS County Liaison. I just have a few updates. On November 6th, SS County Executive Joe DiVincenzo will be hosting in partnership with the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, a food distribution in Monte Urban SS County Park at 10:00 AM. This particular food distribution is for SNAP recipients in light of some of the changes that are happening at the federal level. Additionally, on November 7th, SS County will be hosting its 16th Annual Veterans Day Celebration at the Essex County Memorial Park in Newark off of West Market Street. And this year, we'll be honoring several veterans that are part of our SS County organization. And the time of that celebration will be 12 noon promptly. Additionally, this coming Monday, November 10th, Essex County will be hosting the groundbreaking for the playground that we're undertaking now in Monte Urban Park. There's going to be additional additions to that playground. And we're asking that if council members are available to attend. That will happen at 1:00 PM promptly, and we ask that you enter through the Oakwood Avenue side. Additionally, later on in this month, the 17th of November, SS County will be hosting in Newark, our Thanksgiving food distribution for anyone. That will be held at the SS County Cherry Blossom Welcome Center. And it's asked that encourage that everyone enter through via the Heller Parkway Drive. Additionally, as the holiday seasons approach, SS County will be hosting its Holiday Light Spectacular at SS County Turbo Bag Zoo from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Friday to Saturday, November 21st through November 23rd, daily Friday, November 28th to Saturday, January 3rd. And the light exhibits will be closed on December 21st, December 24th, excuse me, and December 25th for the Christmas holiday, and January 1st for the New Year's Day holiday. And it's free admission for everyone who's interested in attending and being part of that holiday spectacular. Additionally, in closing, I want to thank everyone who was able to attend the grand opening of the community center in Monte Urban Park. It was great to have all representation there from all members of the council. And you all should be receiving from that day photos and a letter of thank you from the county executive himself. At this time, that's all I have, Mr. President. And through your chair, I'll open up the floor for any questions that any member of the council may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
Council.
Go ahead.
Hilbert.
No.
I thought that was you. Oh, Easton.
Oh, it's Easton.
Councilwoman Easton.
Yeah. On 11/6, what was the, what was the time and the date? And what was the time of what was happening on the 6th?
Tomorrow is going to be 10:00 AM until the supply last.
Do you have all of that on a calendar?
Yes.
Did you bring some for us?
I can email it to you.
Okay.
Yes.
Would you please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President.
All right.
Reggie, is that just for, is it for Orange residents or for all of SS County tomorrow?
So tomorrow, it's for all of SS County, any individual that's a SNAP recipient.
Okay. And on the 17th, that's down at Branch Brook, right?
Yes.
Is that hot food or food boxes?
Oh, it's food boxes.
Okay. So the same thing you'll be doing on the 17th down at Branch Brook?
Correct.
Okay. And you said, what is the time for that?
That time is 9:00 AM until supply lasts as well.
Okay. And I have another question. Does the county, or can the county provide any transportation for anybody that needs to get to these food events?
Yes, there is the SS County Transportation System that's run out of the Division of Senior Services. They, I can provide you a phone number, I just have to look it up. They just would have to call that number, Mike Viera, who was the coordinator, and just call and schedule, scheduling or pickup and drop off.
Okay, yes. When you can, you can text me or just give that number to me when you can?
I'll send it to the clerk.
Okay.
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman?
I have a question. As soon as you did the open house, my inbox blew up with rentals and things like that. So I'm on the page, so they go to the essiscountypark.org permits?
Yes.
Do you know if they've already started allowing people to secure dates?
I'm assuming so, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Council President?
Cooley?
I just want to say, you can pass it along, but the facility is first class. I'm glad to see that, you know, the facility has, you know, has come, you know, has come to pass, and it's just going to be a beacon of just good things to come here in the city of Orange for years to come. And if anyone out here didn't go past that facility, it's first-class facility. Yeah, the grand opener was last, last Monday. Beautiful, beautiful place. Thank you.
And I'd just like to counter back on what you said, Councilman Cooley. It is the state-of-the-art facility. And it's been a long time coming, but we have it now. And I hope we all get a chance to utilize it and make some great memories there, you know? So, thank you.
Absolutely. And I'll build that, this is the ninth community park, community house in one of our parks. And as the county executive mentioned, it's no different than the one in Newark. Same quality of the facade and the building.
I think ours is better.
Orange is all is better.
We got the best one.
I believe so.
Okay, thanks.
That's what the county executive said, this is the best one he's built.
That's right.
Because he learned through all the others what he needed to do better.
Absolutely.
I just want to ask, for any of these food giveaways, do you need an ID or anything?
No.
You just come in and they give you a box?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Will there be any turkeys or anything in these boxes?
The, the one on the 17th, there will be turkeys, a thousand turkeys for residents.
Any other questions for Reginald? Thank you. Thank you.
The resolutions and ordinance to be presented at tonight's meeting are listed on the attached regular meeting agenda. If any council member wishes to discuss any resolution or ordinance, it may be discussed at this time. There is one resolution that's in your packets. Resolution 473-2025, which was amended. There was a typo in.
The first, therefore be it resolved, should have reflected 579,000.
97.
597.
597,149.24, excuse me.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Council President, 465, 2025. I believe we had this up before, and, and just like then, the state hasn't made any movement on this. This legislation that the state is still in committee at the Senate and in Assembly. There is no update, and I don't see why we are, you know, getting ahead of ourselves when the state is not making any moves on this legislation that was introduced. It's still in committee. It was introduced in committee September 2024, in Assembly, and the state it was introduced, September of 2024. Nothing has, nothing, there's, there's been no movement. So I just want to make a suggestion or recommendation that until the state, you know, make their mind up what they want to do with the current bills that are in committee, we should, we, we should, we should, we should postpone this legislation until the state completes their legislative process with it.
Council President?
Councilwoman?
Did you want to make a statement before I spoke?
Go ahead.
Okay. In response to what Councilman Cooley has just mentioned, I completely disagree with his, his relax or no action at all approach. If any of my colleagues have been following, this legislation has actually been sponsored by SS County Commissioner Brendan B. Gill, and it was passed by SS County. And this is a resolution saying that we are not only doing our jobs as council members and elected officials upholding human rights in our community, but that we also protect all people, including migrants in our community. This legislation has been passed in Morristown, it's been passed in Princeton, it's been passed in other areas whose demographics do not look like the City of Orange is. And I think it behooves us to not think about we're ahead of ourselves when we're actually behind everybody else. We should be taking action. This resolution is just simply saying that we are in support of it, and we pray and hope that on a state level, it's not only passed, but it's also expanded in a way that it does offer more protection without impeding on the, the ability of our police, and it's still protecting people and making sure that we have a plan that does not cause chaos in our communities. There's already distrust, there's already fear, and there's already uncertainty. But people should be able to look to their local government and feel that we have their backs. And we live among these, we live amongst these people. So I don't know how you're comfortable with taking this off the agenda for a third time. I yield.
Any other?
Yeah, Council Vice President, and this is to my council member, Quan Tavia Hilbert. You said this has been passed?
No, not, she's saying not in Orange, she said the other places.
So SS County, the SS County Commission, Commissioners have just sponsored this and passed it. Commissioner Gill had this resolution in his own form, but very similar, and it was passed locally. So who are we to not follow suit with our county leadership? What does that say about us?
Council Vice President?
I think she means passed in support of it, because it wasn't drafted by the county, was it?
It was drafted by the commissioner. This is a resolution saying that we're, we're in support of it.
If I missed something, I probably did. I didn't see his name on it anyways, that's why I asked that question.
You mean on, on what we have currently before us?
Yeah.
No, this is something that I had to bring back for a third time, so it has not been amended. But it's, it's happened recently.
You were saying it was passed, it was drafted, it passed into the county?
Yes.
But why wouldn't you have noted that in our support?
Why do I have to note that?
Because you have to tell what the originator of it.
He's not the originator, this has been.
That's what I'm asking, so he's not the originator, so he didn't pass it then?
That is not what I'm saying, and you're twisting my words. Give me one second, council member. Let me make this very clear. I brought this back a couple of months ago, and it was voted down twice. And I'm telling you, since the City of Orange council members have voted it down, it has been drafted and proposed to say that the county is in support of this legislation, and it was approved. So this is not the exact legislation that was written by the commissioner, but they are saying the same thing. They were drafted at different times, but they're saying the same thing. It's representing the same thing. So are you saying that you have to have a commissioner's name on it in order for you to say yes?
It says, it said it was Assemblywoman Ellen Parker and Senator Gordon Johnson has introduced it, not Gill. This is what it says to the state legislation.
I'm gonna try it one more time, because I think, no, you're confused, so.
What you, what's here?
I just told you that this was the original. There has been no amendment to it since.
Going back and forth, I'm just saying, I'm reading here as to who they're.
There has not been an amendment to this. So no, Commissioner Gill's name has not been added onto this. He has his own resolution that has been passed. I just want to make sure you understand that, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
So I was trying to read up on it, so, you know, the teacher in me, I, I always want to explain why this is not a good thing. Like, that's the part I'm missing. I'm trying to, so you're putting the legislation up. I'm saying, we are, I know why it's not a good thing to not pass it, but what I'm saying is, I personally don't think we have to wait for the state. But is this the one that came out, this is the Immigrant Trust Directive? Or the, so this is the one that came out in 2018, originally? Like, going all the way back?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I was trying to read, I was trying to make sure I understood that it in no way stops the police from doing their job. It's basically the way that I read it, and I hope I read it right, that it's like, almost like not a stop-and-frisk type situation where you can just question someone's immigration status, you know? So I just, because you just give an overview. I mean, I'm in support of it, because I was contacted by, you know, my residents that are for it, and that's why I'm sitting here. So, but I just think you just need to just, you know, quickly just give an overview on why we should be in support of it. As best, you know, because it has, because when I looked it up, it was saying it was passed in Orange, March 2025, and then it was like throwing me off. That's what the internet said, that's what I was saying. I was like, no, it didn't pass. So I don't know, you know, I don't know if the records are right. So could you just give us an overview of why we should be in support of it?
Can I ask you, where did it say it was passed?
It said, I'll pull it up for you.
Because we didn't.
Your original, your, the original one was up. I don't have the number, wait a minute. Because I knew that it didn't, so that's why I was like, this is not the most up-to-date or accurate. Okay. So on the internet, it says that March 18th, 2025, it was, it was 175, 2005? 2025? And you sponsored it, and it was saying it passed then. But I was saying, it's basically the same as what you had. I'm saying, I don't think we have to wait, because our population is different than the towns that you named. So I just, you know, I just think you can vote it up or down, but just in defense of it, I was just thinking if you could just give an overview of why we should be in support.
So, I'm not quite sure, this was not passed here. This was not passed here in Orange, yeah, so I'm not.
I know you want to get it passed.
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure. It's probably saying that I, I sponsored it, but it was not passed. So this is the third time that we see this version of this resolution. It has not been amended. I just want to make sure I state that one more time. Its main purpose is to say that we here in the City of Orange, in our municipality, we prioritize protecting the rights of all individuals, regardless of their citizenship status. We're also making sure that there are safe havens within our community, meaning that if people are dropping their kids off to school, or they're like in a supermarket, or they're signing up for something, that their information is not going to be used to pass over to ICE that could actually put a target on their back for someone to come and scoop them up off the streets, right? We're also saying that this does not hinder the police department on executing any warrants or any daily duties or responsibilities. If there's someone that they're pulling over, they pull them over. That is the police department's responsibility to do what they need to do necessarily and execute, right? So this is not impeding on any of that. This is just strictly saying there are places in the City of Orange where people might be vulnerable, okay? And we don't want to make sure that they're being manipulated, or they're being set up, or they're being cornered to being taken and removed, and then their family members have a hard time trying to figure out where they are or how they could get them released, and it would just create chaos in the community. I know for a fact I was on site for at least three situations that happened in the City of Orange. And sadly, at that point, we can't do anything about it, because we're talking about ICE, right? That's, that's above us, right? That's state, that's federal, that's beyond us, right? So even with our local police station, right, our police department, they should also still be notified about certain things that are happening in our community, because we don't know if they're coming here with a warrant for one person, but then there's innocent bystanders. So we just want to make sure that everyone here understands their rights. We, we understand that there is a protocol that needs to be put in place that if somebody is coming here and they want to pick up an individual, or they're coming to interview or question an individual, that the remaining community is protected, and that there are always, there's always somebody, somebody making sure that the human rights are being upheld in these, in these situations, okay? I also want to add that one of the situations, one of the scenes that I was on, there were federal employees using U-Haul trucks to pick people up. So they're hiding in plain sight. They're hiding in plain sight. And it's not just, I'm just be very frank with you all, okay? It's, it's weaponizing. It's weaponizing the people who are actually here to protect us, right? It is weaponizing the system against everyday people who are just walking the street to pick their kids up from school, to go to work, to shop, to go grocery shopping. How do you know what an immigrant looks like? That is very dangerous. That is very dangerous. So it's not just targeting our Hispanic population, but it trickles down to everyone else, including my family. So this is personal. I will tell you that. But this is also being a human being and saying that no one in our community deserves to walk out their house and feel fear all the time because they don't think anybody's protecting them. So I went off on a little tangent, but I hope that was very clear.
I wanted you to.
Yeah.
Counsel.
I hope that was just very clear.
No.
All right, we're gonna take that off on a separate vote?
No, Council Vice President, I want to make a recommendation. And I'm reading this, and Councilwoman, the Councilwoman went through there with a lot of stuff that's not even here. What I'm saying, what I was saying was, this is in support of the trust that. What I would recommend, the recommendation I'd like to make is we give it to our law department, have them consult with our police department, and make sure that we are not doing something that's going to interfere, and let them weigh in on what we're trying to do. I mean, it's not critical right now that we do this tonight, so let's have them write us an opinion from our law department in conjunction with the police as they read it, so we can make sure we do the right thing.
Reginald Bledsoe, do you have something to say?
Just, just really quickly, I just want to clarify what happened with the Board of Commissioners. So the Board of Commissioners sponsored a ceremonial resolution in support of these two bills. As we know now, the, the two bills are proposed in the legislature, and it's before committee. So what the commissioner did was basically use a resolution stating that Essex County supported the intent of the legislation and supported the fact that to move the legislation forward and urged that Governor Murphy sign it. A number, a number of deliberative bodies passed ceremonial resolutions for a variety of issues, especially when there's pending matters before the legislature. As we all know, elections have consequences, and ultimately, how policy discussions go from one administration to the decks. A lot of folks were really trying to get these support resolutions through the pipeline in, in light of what happened yesterday. Thank goodness, New Jersey remained the course policy-wise, not to get partisan in one way or the other, but a number of deliberative bodies passed resolutions in support of a variety of issues. So not to say one way or the other, but it's a formal item of expression that this body will send to the legislature, or to the Speaker, to the Senate President, saying, we support the passage of this legislation. So I just wanted to clarify, that's, that's what Commissioner Gill passed last month, two months ago in September, joining a whole host of municipalities that supported the passage of the Immigrant Directive Act.
Thank you, Reginald.
So I just have one question. You talked about this hasn't been amended, you know, twice or three times. What amendments do you need to put on here? Or that's missing from here?
Well, no, I was just referring to what the Councilwoman Easton's concern was about not seeing what just happened previously in September on the county level with the Commissioner Gill and how he did the ceremonial resolution. So that has not been placed on here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'm gonna leave it alone. So, okay, so thinking out loud again. So when the legislation goes up, it goes to the law department. If there was a question with something that was in the legislation, it being illegal or whatever, it wouldn't have made it to the agenda, right? I mean, am I saying that right?
You are.
Okay, so if the police department was going to weigh in... I'm sorry?
Law department.
I mean, well, I'm saying, because Councilwoman said, meet with the police department to make sure, but I would think the law department would know if something in the legislation was illegal. I'm just thinking out loud, I'm sorry.
No, I think that's, that's accurate. I think that it's a separate question or separate issue as to whether or not there's police involvement or police question that should be looked into further. But if there's any issue with respect to the form or the legality of the legislation, we would certainly weigh in on that. And to the extent that there isn't, it would be presented to the governing body.
Okay. I'm, I'm finished.
Yeah. And that was, and that was what I was saying. I think the police should read through it, and we should, regardless of all of that, because we know whatever we do, they're the ones that have to enforce it or go by the enforcement. And you only did the form and the legality. You didn't read into or share that with them to make sure that... I'm not saying that we shouldn't support it, but I just want to make sure what we do is the right thing to do.
Right, I get that. And even further, in that regard, I mean, the police may have questions in terms of how they go forward, in terms of enforcement, in terms of procedural, procedural direction. They may have questions that we can answer or at least allow them to follow, so.
That's why I said I recommend it.
Okay, attorney, well, hold on one second, I apologize. So I actually did speak to a couple of officers, but I would love it for the gentleman to approach and speak on it. Thank you.
Good evening. So yeah, so anything with immigration, we are bound by attorney general guidelines in the state of New Jersey, and we don't ask for... and we don't ask for immigration status, but we do not cooperate in any judicial, uh, immigration operations, federal operations of any kind. Um, we don't honor judicial warrants, uh, we don't send out like, honor like ICE detainers and things of that nature, and we're under strict guidelines not to, um, cooperate, uh, from our Attorney General. We have very, it's very clear for us. So the, obviously the Trust Act in itself is, is exactly what it is. It's to ensure cooperation or trust between the police and their communities. So our community has, uh, whether any one of immigration status, any citizen, we want to ensure the trust. So that alone, if we started, um, violating that Attorney General, we would violate the trust of our citizens. And that's basically, um, where we're bound, um, under the Attorney General guideline. And to this point, uh, we haven't had issues, uh, in the department, uh, regarding that. And we do receive the ICE detainers, uh, on occasion, and they would know when, like anyone else that was arrested, when they go to the county, that, that's, that's where they would go, wouldn't have nothing to do with, we would not, but, uh, we would not honor the ICE detainer. If they were summoned out, they'd be released. We don't hold anybody any extra. We would never, uh, add another charge or anything like that based on an immigration status because we don't even ask about immigration status. It doesn't appear on our arrest records of any kind.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
By the way, um, Chief, congratulations.
Yes, so.
Let's give him a hand.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Officially, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any, any one, any other legislation we want to talk about?
Yes, um, Council Vice President, seventy twenty twenty-five. Again, this is one of these handicap, um, resolutions that, you know, there, the engineer says there is a driveway, and on the, um, resident's, um, letter, she says I do not have a driveway. Okay, so there's discrepancy there. You know, if there's a driveway, why can't she park in the driveway? And, and, and I think we talked about this before, you know, when the engineer is out there doing their reports, you know, it, we need to know, you know, if there's a driveway, why can't she park in the driveway? We never get that response from the engineer, okay? We need that from the engineer. There is a driveway, but due to circumstances or due to whatever, this tenant cannot park in the driveway. This doesn't say that. This says that there is a driveway, and she's saying there's no driveway. So there's a discrepancy here, so I think we need to, um, put this aside, postpone it until, you know, we get clear direction as to what's going on.
Thank you. Any other legislation?
One more, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wasn't finished. I wasn't finished. Um, uh, we had four sixty-six. I think there's some discrepancies. Four six six twenty twenty-five?
I'm so sorry, Councilman Colley. So you said seventy is going to be postponed?
My recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Councilman Colley.
And four six six twenty twenty-five?
Four twenty-six.
Yes. Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at the, uh, um, if you look at the now there for be resolved that. Uh, I don't know if this is a typo, um, or if this is just an old bill.
It's an old bill.
This, this is no bill.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
I'll double check that, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And yes to go, why are we entertaining a bill two years old? Why, where's this bill been?
The vendor moved out the country. She just came back. She stated she was never paid, so she performed the services without a purchase order. Um, so now we're ratifying the contract and bringing it forward to council to make sure there's no confirming order.
Okay.
Council President, do we have a statute of limitations on, um, paying people who, who fail to, um, submit their bills to be paid?
Usually, if they perform the service, they're paid. In this instance, because she moved out the country, there was a lapse, a lapse in communication, and that's why it's been presented to us this much later.
Lapse in communication on who part?
The department and the vendor.
Um, I, I, I don't know. Two years, I mean, um, if someone comes to me saying that they, I owe you, I'm like, no, I'm not paying you.
I, I, I guess, two years later.
I mean, if you do an audit, right, and you realize that you have an outstanding invoice, you gotta pay. You gotta pay.
That's right.
Two years, I'm like, hey.
Uh, Councilman Ross, you have any more?
Are we moving this for a separate vote, Councilman Colley?
I mean, no.
No, okay. I just want to know. Thank you.
First move out the country, I, I, I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a convenient, that's a convenient statement. Oh, I moved out, I moved out the country, my dog died, I had to go bury him over there, I mean, all that's-
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You were done? You were done, right?
Yes, I'm done.
No, because he'll come with a list if I don't, you guys?
I'm done, yes.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. Is there a second?
Second, Montague.
Second by Councilman Weldon Montague III. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at seven forty-nine P.M. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township held at City Hall, twenty-nine North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Wednesday, November the fifth, following the conference meeting. Roll call, Councilman Colley.
For you.
Councilwoman Easton.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Hilbert.
Present.
Councilman Montague III.
Present.
Councilman Ross.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson.
Here.
Council, Councilwoman Wooton is absent. Also present is Tricia Cipio, Chris Hartweig, Business Administrator, Derek Brown, Fire Chief, Niall Clements, CFO, Gracia R. Montella, City Attorney, Marlene G. Towns, Legislative Research Officer, and Brian Mooney, Police Chief. The requirements of NJ SA ten colon four dash nine-
President, uh, point of, what are we, pleasure of allegiance?
Thank you so much. I do apologize. Could we all stand for the pleasure of allegiance?
Led by Curry Colley.
Oh my god.
That's just gonna be your job.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. It's all going so fast.
I'm a true fidelity.
Uh, the requirements of NJ SA ten colon four dash nine, it's a sunshine law has been met, and notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in the record transcript on Thursday, July tenth, twenty twenty-five, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, this council's website, the city's website, and filed in the office of the city clerk. Meeting minutes. Meeting minutes for October twenty-first, conference and regular meeting minutes. Councilmember Wooton was absent and ship abstained. Is there a motion?
Motion, Summers Johnson.
Second, Ross.
Motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman Ross. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passed. Reports. Department monthly revenue collections. The clerk's office collected two hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents for the month of September twenty twenty-five. The tax successor collected thirty dollars for the month of September twenty twenty-five. There were no Oprah reports to report. Uh, there was one communications and petitions from New Jersey American Water. Uh, this was to, in, in the matter of the petition of New Jersey American Water Company for recovery of regulatory asset established by incremental COVID-nineteen related expenses and for establishment of an uncollectible adjustment clause, BPU document number WR two five zero eight zero four six seven. Thank you. Citizens' comments on general issues and agenda items. Members of the public wishing to address the council may do so during this portion of the meeting. Speakers must sign their name on the comments sign-up sheet and approach the microphone when called upon to allow maximum public involvement. Each speaker is permitted one three-minute period to interact with council and must provide his or her name and street address prior to beginning any remarks. Visual aids are not permitted. Speakers are reminded to be courteous and mindful of other individuals. Each person has the right to speak on any subject, but is, is responsible for abuse of that right. The city bears no liability to any comments made by the public and maintains discretion to remove any person engaged in obscene or disruptive conduct. The council will consider all comments and questions and will respond if and when appropriate, which may or may not be during this meeting.
Uh, Virgilio Aran?
Hello.
How are you?
Yeah, let me know, I will. Um, good evening. My name is Virgilio Aran. I live two oh three Sterling Avenue, Orange, New Jersey. Um, I'm here in support of the Immigrant Trust Act. Um, dear, um, dear honorable president of the City Council, a member of the City Council, again, my name is Virgilio Aran. I am the National, uh, National Deputy Care Campaign Director, uh, with the National Domestic Workers Alliance, campaign strategy with the Laundry Worker Center, and a very proud member of this, uh, resident of Orange. I'm right, I'm here basically providing my testimony, submitting my testimony in strong support of the Immigrant Trust Act and to urge you to pass this important resolution. The Immigrant Trust Act aims to build safer community, more unified community by fostering trust when all residents, regardless of immigration status, feel safe responding crimes and cooperating with law enforcement, the entire community, and the entire community benefits. And thank you so much to the new, to the new chief, um, to highlight, um, basically this part here. Um, the act, the act allows local police to focus on public safety rather than federal immigration enforcement. This clear separation is essential for building trust and keeping Orange neighborhood secure. I have witnessed the impact of fear amid trust of, um, in our community. In March, in March of this year, the Laundry Worker Center responded to a false report of immigration enforcement agents at a high school, which caused real panic among the residents. Week later, federal race led to, um, led to few, uh, week later, a federal race here, a block away from, uh, from this building, basically led to fewer, uh, fewer visitors to local businesses. And family-owned restaurant in Scotland Avenue, um, has to close due to, uh, due to client's fear to going to consume their products, um, in our city. Um, the Laundry Worker Center and Window of the Spirit have reached over five hundred members this year, and one of the biggest concern has been immigration, especially prevalent among Haitian and the Latinx community in, in Orange. Many immigrants' workers are afraid to report issues because of their status. These are not isolated incidents. When residents fear seeking help, crime can go unreported. The Immigrant Trust Act addressed this by ensuring residents that local police are here to protect and serve, not to deport. And this, uh, this encourages victim, victims and weakness to come forward and giving law enforcement the information nee- needed to keep Orange safe. Some may worry that this ad will hinder law enforcement, but it actually empowers officer to build a strong relationship with this, uh, with the community, and this is only something that we heard today here, uh, in this body, less than potentially ten minutes ago. When police are seen as a lie rather, rather, sorry, than, uh, rather than enforcement, sorry, um-
That's the time, sir.
It's help to build trust. I, we urge, first, thank you so much, and we urge everyone here to support this, uh, this, um, um, resolution. And it has been passed in different municipalities, including Princeton and Morrisville.
Thank you so much, Mr. Aran.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez? Good evening.
Just gonna wait for the time.
Go ahead, just.
I would like to see it, please. It helps me keep track.
It's not working, that's why I'm using the phone.
Okay, let me just pull it up on my- Forty-seven Mountain View. Good evening. Bear with me, so I am sick, tired, and feeling intimidated by members in front of me. Here are my questions and concerns. Council members, why do you feel raising our water rates in this is the best solution? I'm not asking why we are doing it because I know it's, it's to pay for fixes. I'm asking why this is the best solution. Why not go back to Viola? Have we considered using funds from the CBA to offset the cost of how, to offset the cost? Or how about asking these new developers to take on some of the debt for us? I ask because my bill has doubled the last one and a half years on top of the yearly eight hundred dollar increases in my taxes for the past six years. I definitely used less water this summer compared to last summer because I did not water my grass at all, and my bill was double. What are we gonna do about this? Because it's a huge concern for me, and I imagine a lot of homeowners. Why do council members address comments made during public speaking portion after our time is up instead of when you have an opportunity to interact with us? At times, re- misrepresenting what we say and then telling us to be quiet. BA Hartwick. Has the hospital site been ticketed this month for the violations they have? Community events, who covers them? If it is us, why do we continue to host these events with the amount of debt we have from previous years? That makes me uncomfortable to continue to host events. How can we go about to pause events until Orange gets a handle on the budget? Tricia, I have sent you two emails last week and have received their responses. Why have I not received a response and to clarify, I only asked how I should formulate a question regarding how to get a full detailed map of the historical sites in an Oprah request, and I said if you do not know, who could I ask to submit the form properly the first time? What is the guidelines followed by city workers in regards to communication with the residents? For example, continuous, continuous ignored emails, calls, and messages. Is this practice now generally accepted? For the resolution four six five, why can't we show Orange where we stand? What are you afraid of, Colley and Easton, since you guys were the two that spoke against it? Lastly, are the historical sites in Orange recognized by the state of New Jersey as historical?
Are you finished?
Would you like to respond?
Sure, I'll answer.
Okay.
A portion of the hospital site is owned by the city and a portion of the hospital site is owned by the developer. That portion that's owned by the developer has not been ticketed, and that portion that is owned by the city is in the process of preparing a plan for the cleanup. Um, with respect to historical sites, whether or not they're recognized by the state or the National Historic Register depends upon how they were processed.
And the messages, are you, is that generally accepted not to receive responses?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The messages, like when residents reach out via email, is that a generally accepted practice not to-
Depends on who they reach out to. So, for example, um, certain communications have to go through my office. So if you're directing inquiries to individuals within the city, some of those are forwarded to me. Some of them are directed to be responded to. Some of them have to, have to be cleared.
So they have to answer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Uh, Stuart? I don't, I know, I know.
I had a hard time too.
Good evening.
Sidon Stricker.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Sidon Stricker. I live at thirty-four Regal Avenue in Madison, New Jersey. And I come here to support four sixty-five, which is the I T A resolution in front of you. I come here as a friend and as an organization, member of Window of the Spirit, which is an organization that was mentioned before, has worked very closely with, um, Laundry Worker Center. And we've been in town during the census, we've been in town different times, working together with your local organization. Um, I pay attention, someone asked, uh, what does an immigrant look like? I am one, and I'm from Brazil. And for the first few years in this country, about seven of them, I was undocumented. I was really fearful of my condition. This was almost forty years ago. Way different scenario than we have right now with this current federal administration. And of course, as it can easily be seen, I have a lot of privileges by the way I look, so I would most likely not be profiled under this administration as an immigrant. But I was still afraid of the condition that I was in, of not having a piece of paper that would let me stay here because I wanted to be here. The I T D, the Immigrant Trust Directive- The ITD, the Immigrant Trust Directive, was passed by the current governor, Murphy, on his previous administration, and your chief did a much better job than I could do explaining what that is all about. The ITA doesn't make any change to that. It just expands the success of getting trust, community police, to the school, to the library, to the motor vehicles, and to other services that the state does. That's all it is, expands on the success. And what we're asking to do today is to pass this resolution, which doesn't pass something at the senate or the assembly. This is their job to do. If you're informed about it, and if you want to protect your citizens, your residents of this town, you would tell, listen, assembly, and listen senate, you should look at this and pass this. We think it's a good idea. You can't do that, but you can say you believe in it, or you can say, I don't believe in it. I think the federal government should come here and go to library and pick up the numbers of everybody and make whatever they want to do of it. That's what's in front of you to decide. If you support this idea of federal government and local government and state government, different entities or not? I came here to support the idea and congratulate you. At the end of the meeting, we'll see if I can continue congratulating you or not on being the 20th town, 20th town that would pass this. So 19 have done this already, and believing that 20 towns, there are the 19 towns do have police departments, they do have lawyers, and they do read, they do do their homework. So if 19 towns in New Jersey did that, and you're part of the third county to do that too, thank you, I hope I can continue to congratulate you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Adam McGovern?
Hi, thank you. I, like my boss Stuart, who just spoke, are from, is, I am from out of town, and I thank you for the welcome of, uh, you know, your hospitality and being able to speak with you about this. Welcome is important, you know.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Adam McGovern. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that when he called me, I didn't have to, okay. Um, it's, uh, 87 St. John's Avenue in Mount Tabor, New Jersey. Um, you know, as I was saying, welcome is important because, uh, it's really what has created our country, you know? So many of us are from somewhere else, and it's all about, you know, how we work together and benefit from what each other can, you know, can bring to our towns. I was here a little early, I'm not familiar with the town, I got to walk around, and it's a lovely place, you know? We've got this kind of, you know, thanks to global warming, we've got this summery night out there, and people are out and enjoying themselves, and there's towns a lot through this, uh, this, uh, state that are coming like ghost towns because, you know, people are so frightened about masked, unaccountable, indiscriminate raids going on. What this bill can do is to stop that, to make people, uh, realize that a line is being drawn by the people who are here to protect us, to keep our neighborhood stable, uh, to make sure that the 25% of the whole state who are immigrants and all of us who care about them often are related to them, in the same family, work with them, uh, often work for them, because immigrants start more businesses than we who were born here, uh, are protected. Um, I thank everybody who asks questions about it, you know? I mean, I think that's what democracy is about. Uh, the, the state legislature, as you know, kind of sends itself on vacation between budget season and election season, but you guys are all here doing your jobs, and part of that is to ask the questions, and, you know, uh, the towns are where, uh, you see the consequences of immigration policy first and can have a say in it. And so I hope you'll have a say affirmatively, saying that, you know, this is a bill that should be passed on the state level. The county has spoken, uh, as, as, as has been mentioned, and, you know, the more people who are together making this statement, uh, all of us being listened to by you, uh, hopefully the people in Trenton will be listening to you in turn, uh, and you can have a big part to play in that tonight. So I hope that, uh, number 465 will be passed tonight, and I thank the councilman for, uh, introducing it, and I congratulate you in advance, uh, for doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. McGovern. Brent Engel?
Can I just, before he sits down, could I just ask him a question?
Mr. McGovern, she had a question.
I'm, I'm reading, I've been sitting here reading this as you, as you talk, and I heard our police chief talk. Could you, I guess I'm a little confused, how does this really protect you when it says that our police department can't get involved at all?
Uh, no, it will, it doesn't say that they, they can't get involved. It says that, uh, they have the option not to, uh, cooperate with ICE. You know, the, the 10th Amendment to the US Constitution, uh, says that the federal government can't, commandeer is the word they use, they can't, you know, take over, they can't take over local resources to do a job of the federal government, so it's our right.
I'm reading what they said here. The, the bill will limit New Jersey's Obama into federal detention, of course, by creating new data and blah, 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 so, 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 so. And it talks about, um, the use of the money that we don't fund the federal government with our local money for immigration purposes for detention. I'm just reading through it, and I'm just trying to figure out in my mind, how does it really protect you all as an immigrant?
Well, uh, one big way it does is that, um, as, as the chief explained, under the current Immigrant Trust Directive, uh, local police don't cooperate with ICE. Were that to go away, um, overnight, the 30,000 cops we have in this state could potentially be deputized as ICE agents, uh, and, uh, that would be a lot more dangerous and destabilizing for our communities.
But he also said that, yeah, under Attorney General, Attorney General says local police can't get involved with ICE or what they're doing in the city. That's why, that's why I'm confused. You know, as I read through this, I'm trying to figure out, how does it really protect you? And, and I still, I still don't understand that piece of it. Do I miss something?
Well, one thing.
But, but as you said, this is just in support of the legislation, but I'm still trying to figure out, how does it really protect you?
Okay, one quick thing, I don't want to take up too much time, but he was talking about, he used the word ICE detainer a lot. That refers to when somebody is, you know, taken into local jail, maybe they did something, or maybe they were just arrested, and then they get released. If the local, uh, you know, law enforcement decides that they can go back out, either they weren't guilty, or, you know, they'll just come back with a summons or something, it means that they can't be held longer, uh, if ICE comes along and says, oh, by the way, this person is undocumented, and we're gonna take him away and send him to El Salvador or something. You know, it's, it's not, it's like against double jeopardy. It's saying that, you know, if you're an undocumented immigrant and you pay your debt to society and whatever the, the, the police picked you up for, they can't then keep holding you after a judge would release you, so ICE can come and pick you up and like double punish you, if that makes sense. It's, uh, you know, it, it keeps people from being hauled away by the federal government if the local law enforcement has determined that they're already, uh, you know, they've already either paid their debt or, you know, served their time.
Thank you so much, Mr. McGovern.
Thank you.
Brent Engel?
Good evening. Brent Engel, 174 Haywood Avenue. May 16th of 2017, Ordinance 29, 2017, amended Chapter 88 fees. The council's website does not provide the text of that ordinance. August 4th, 2021, Ordinance 43, 2021, amending Chapter 88 fees. Previous rate 5203 per 1,000 cubic feet of water. Amended rate $59.83 per 100 cubic feet. Hope I read those right. Basically, it equates to 15% and, uh, uh, 15% increase. May 1st of last year, Ordinance 26-2024, amending Chapter 88 fees, amended rate $69.40 per 1,000 cubic feet of water, an increase of 16%. But that wasn't enough. Because on December 30th of last year, Ordinance 54, 2024, amended Chapter 88 fees. The amended rate is what is currently being charged of $72.17 per cubic, 1,000 cubic feet of water. That was an increase of 4%, basically totaling last year's increase of 20%. Here we are with Ordinance 62-2025, amending Chapter 88 fees, amended, uh, amended rate of 75.78 per 1,000 cubic feet of water, an increase of 5%. However, there are additional increases of 3% for the next five years. That basically totals up to 20% that you're gonna hit us with tonight by voting on it and still charging us five years down the road. I'm just wondering how it's gonna be that people will be able to pay these bills or wind up having their houses taken away and sold at a public auction? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Engel.
So, the rate increases, each time there's a rate increase, we do a rate study. The rate study takes into account the operational expenses which have increased year over year. It takes into account the capital expenses which have increased year over year, and it takes into account the debt service which has increased as a result of capital expenses. Most of the capital issuances, including those for PFAS and those for lead service lines, are required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. In addition, the Water Quality Improvement Act requires the replacement of so many linear feet of water lines on an annual basis. As we all know, we have a very old system. We spend approximately $3 million a year in capital repairs. That doesn't include regular maintenance, it doesn't include replacement of storm sword grates, it doesn't include replacement of manhole covers, it doesn't include replacement of curb boxes, it doesn't include replacement of connections from curb boxes to mains. So there's a lot that has to be done in order to maintain your own water system, which is why many communities, including ourselves, have looked at whether or not it makes financial sense to actually sell the water system to a private entity. One of the reasons that we've determined not to sell to a private entity is because the private entities under BPU jurisdiction can raise your rates by 6% a year and often do. And while they take over some of the capital improvements, they don't take over all of your debt. It really depends upon the value of your system. So, running your own water system is an expensive operation, um, and it's made more expensive by the regulations that continue to come out of Washington and Trenton. They're changing, we, we were given regulations with regard to the PFAS system in terms of how clean the water had to be of the PFAS particles, and the federal government's now coming along and making those more stringent. Fortunately, we designed the system to a more stringent standard, um, but it's an expensive system. We had to do a temporary system in order to avoid regulatory fines. That system is expensive, it's gonna be replaced by a permanent system. The lead service line replacement, um, is again mandated both by federal and state law. And while all that's going on, we've been pursuing grants, principal free loans from the I-Bank. We have had discussions with developers regarding taking over certain of the projects like well five, well three rehabilitation. Those are things that we have planned on a capital basis over the next three to five years. So, you know, I, I understand the rate impact, um, and then to say nothing of inflation. So, the 3% per year anticipates the expenses that will be incurred as a result of not only inflation, but capital improvements that are required to be made by the system or for the system, as well as debt service on PFAS and debt service on our portion of lead service lines.
Thank you. Lydel Carter? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Council Vice President and members of this body. Uh, my name is Lydel Carter, 196 Claremont Terrace. Um, I'm coming here in support of Ordinance 5825, which was sponsored by, uh, council member Jamie Somish Johnson, and it's really about, um, and we've heard a lot of commentary tonight about both quality of life and safety, and, and ultimately, that's what this is about. Um, I've come before this body before, but I'm more than happy to say again that, uh, the situation has not changed. Um, we are hoping that, um, uh, the, the messages from, uh, councilwoman Somish Johnson and what we've been presenting, would compel this body to vote for this in affirmative. Our expectation is that, um, if you do so, that we take immediate action on it and hopefully temporarily shut, shut down the sheet, the, the street by tomorrow would be great, um, because, uh, getting off the block at, uh, Claremont Terrace continues to be very, very problematic. Again, I'm happy to come before you, not to report that someone has gotten into an accident, but we're dodging bullets every day. Um, and so if, if folks really feel compelled, I encourage you to vote in affirmative for this. I'm actually joined by some members of, of our neighborhoods, some of which have been there years before me, and some have just joined the neighborhood, and it's always been an issue. Um, and I hope that folks, uh, support, um, this, uh, this, uh, ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Tell them the bad part.
Yeah.
No, 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 it's not that bad, it's not.
It's not that bad, it's just, I don't want you to think that we can go out the next day or tomorrow. There's a 20-day estoppel period on any ordinance, it doesn't become effective for 20 days. So, we can plan during the 20 days, but we can't take any affirmative action during that time period.
20 days starting tomorrow, 20 days starting tonight?
Tomorrow.
Erica Romi, money? How you doing?
Good job.
All right, I tried, I tried. I tried.
All right, uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for, um, giving us audience here. So I'm before you today, Elijah Day Romi, 228 Claremont Terrace. I'm before you today and so, uh, to support or in support of Ordinance 58 to, uh, 2025, to change the traffic pattern on Claremont Terrace, as my, uh, brother, uh, neighbor here, um, was before you shortly. So just to give a little bit more context, so Claremont Terrace is a one-way street that essentially runs from Sylvan to, uh, South Center Street, or where South Center Street and Harrison Street awkwardly meet. I would say dangerously meets is a better term. Uh, so, as my email to our councilwoman and council, um, president, uh, Wuin as well, I described the intersection as a death trap. I wish I was exaggerating. Uh, truly, there is no way to safely traverse or pass through that intersection without, you know, like essentially coming close to death or getting into an accident. There is no other way to describe it. Ultimately, uh, you have to contend with traffic coming from, I guess, the South Orange side, also traffic coming from East Orange, and then traffic coming from South Center Street, all traveling at a speed at which you have very little time to react. You know, I've seen in the last essentially six months or so, two accidents near the site at the bottom of, of the street where we're forced to exit through. Uh, now, how many near misses have, have I seen? I see several every single week. Um, you know, my, my mother, she's, um, I would say. You know, my my mother, she's, I would say, more seasoned in life. She may not have essentially the reaction time in order to avoid an accident. My kids who are very young, I can see I plan to be there for a very long time. And I want them to be able to grow up and be able to traverse or go through that intersection safely without having to to think twice for their lives. Now, we, Lydell and I, essentially over the summer, we did the petition that's hopefully attached to the ordinance. There are twenty-nine houses on Claremont Terrace. Out of those twenty-nine houses, we got twenty-nine signatures. Those twenty-nine signatures represent eighteen individual residences. Now, if my math is correct, that's approximately sixty-five percent of the block that's in support. And as you know, not everyone opens the door. I would say a hundred percent of those who opened the door signed the petition. Many of them explained to us that they've always had issues, but they did not have a means or manner to address them. And I have to be honest, I didn't fully understand either, but hopefully their voices can be heard in your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Diana, is it Magid? Maria.
Maria.
Diana Maria to Green Beerly Grove, Madison, New Jersey. And also member of Wind of the Spirit, we have been, we're very close with Laundry Workers Center here in town. And long time ago, I did somewhere with the day labor workers, long, long time ago, at the at the time Bravo corner. But I'm here in support of Resolution four sixty-five, the Immigrant Trust Act, and everything has been said, like the facts and everything. But I can tell you, I came from Columbia nineteen ninety-one. And I I finished law school and came here because I was, my life was threatened. I came to the United States. And I became undocumented because I don't want to know once know about me. So you have one year to apply for a political asylum, but I didn't because I was so scared. I don't want to know once know about who I was. My brothers were tortured and killed. I came February twenty-seven nineteen ninety-one. My brother was tortured and killed in November four nineteen ninety-one, the same year. Anyway, so what I share with you is personal, but it's nothing new. I keep seeing the same thing over and over again from people came from all over the world. And we came here because we know someone, we know people were welcome in some ways. You 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 try to to be good. You're trying to be part of celebrate democracy. And when I came here and we started our organization, I was thrilled to see this moment that you can come to a town and share your life and what are you thinking and hope and hope the laws can make difference in a town and a state in the nation. So I ask you, please consider for those brothers and sisters that I'm sure you know, and they are undocumented and they are afraid to consider to pass and support and be a leaders of the Immigrant Trust Act in Orange. That will be a sign of welcoming and that will be a really blessing for immigrants in this town. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You can move the agenda.
Can I get a motion to close citizens' comments?
Motion to close citizens' comments, Somis Johnson.
Motion to close citizens' comments was made by Councilwoman Jamie Somis Johnson, seconded by Councilman Ross. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Council comments?
Yes. Councilwoman Somis.
Because I looked at you, right?
Yes.
Good evening. Very happy to be out here tonight. As I say to everyone, someone didn't wake up. So it's impossible for me to walk around angry all the time. So I greet my residents from Claremont Terrace. I greet my residents from Sterling Avenue. Thank you for communicating your concerns with me. It's always good when residents come in support of legislation that they wanted. Truth is, you don't need a petition. I learned early on when I became a councilwoman, it's good to have. Because when you're changing traffic and things like that, you don't want residents to then come to the meeting and say, why did you do that? You know, but you have the majority. You know, you have the majority of support. I'm very happy of the Park House at Orange Park. I actually grew up as a little girl in the one that's by the basketball court that was open like years ago. And I'm just so happy that we finally have our own. Wally Choice was my father's best, best friend since kindergarten. They have one that's named in his honor in Montclair. And like I said, residents have been blowing me up for wanting to have family reunions, you know. And when we lost the Elks Lounge, I felt like we lost a space for our residents just to have repasses and baby showers. I had my baby shower at the Elks and things like that. So with all the bad things that happen and the hard decisions that we have to make in here, it's always good to have some good news. As far as the playground area, because I'm a teacher and I teach all types of students, I've always asked that, you know, it be a special needs park or a park for autistic children like they have in Bloomfield. So I'm happy to see the repairs. I'm happy to see a flyer about a veterans event going on in Monte Ervin communities. So when I saw it on a flyer, I'm like, finally, why not Orange? Also, I've always complained about the flowers at the top of Orange Park. Well, they're not flowers. They're actually bushes, and I'm still going to complain because they're not the pretty flowers that they used to be in the seventies where everyone took their wedding pictures there. So I'm happy that we do have greenery, but I wish it was colorful. Yesterday, I was, when I voted, I was on cloud nine. I mean, Forest Street normally has very low numbers and it looked amazing seeing so many young people exercise their right. I always bring one of my kids with me just because my parents took me to Haywood to vote since nineteen seventy-something. And it's just important and I'm so happy to wake up to a blue wave. It's just important that we exercise, you know, voting has consequences. But I'm very happy that so many people came out in such large numbers. People do not understand that the county looks down on our voting and they see if we are civically minded and if we are voting. So when you don't come out, you actually hurt funding and things that come to our city. If you don't believe it, don't vote. So I thank you all for coming out yesterday and exercising. There's so many mail-in ballots. There was really no excuse. My goddaughter who lives with me came home from keen to vote, took her right back. And I was like, you gotta come home, one vote, you know, you just don't want to be that deciding factor. So gotta come home, only fifteen minutes away. But thank you. So yesterday was amazing.
Thank you so much. Councilman Coley.
Yeah, let me quick. Figuring back ones, Councilwoman Somis Johnson, I just want to congratulate all the folks that was on a ballot yesterday and who was victorious. Your work is just going to begin. And I just thank you for making that commitment to serve. Mr. BA, I see that the lower in the main street, they corrected that, I believe they corrected that that water leak that we had out there. I seen them out there today.
So we're in the process of correcting it. It was actually, we believe, caused by PSENG when they did the repavement of the road. Okay. So we're having discussions with PSENG over the cost.
Okay, okay. All right. So are we going? Is it, is it, is it, is it completely repaired now or?
It was as of six-thirty this evening.
Okay, all right, all right. And and I just want just want to say, there's one permit parking. Like for years, we enjoy permit parking here in in Orange for the streets that border municipalities where people kind of come over and and park their vehicles and take up our much-needed parking. Looking at how the the street sweeping is maintained, I personally feel that we 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 need more street sweepers, you know, to take care of the the streets. And you don't have to comment, but this is just what I'm thinking. The permit parking, I think that we should maybe start to consider charging for the permit parking. Just a minimal fee to help offset some of the costs of the street sweepers. Mr. BA, I believe that the street sweepers that we currently have, they require a lot of preventive preventive maintenance just to keep them on the street, keep them going. And that will help, you know, maybe keep those street sweepers going so we can continue to keep our streets, you know, clean. And the fees that are that is collected for the permit parking, maybe those funds could be put into an account like the Open Space and just used for some type of maintenance for the street sweeper or perhaps maybe buying another street sweeper so we could continue to provide that much-needed service for residents.
I'll leave right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Herbert. Herbert. You know, I know your name.
You know, I'm going to change it soon.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I am Mrs. Jean Baptiste. But yes, thank you, Council President and my colleagues. I want to first start off by saying yes. Congratulations to all the new candidates and our new governor, Governor Mikey Sherrill. I believe that Orange showed up and we got the job done yesterday. And I would love to see that same energy, that same motivation in all of our elections. Congratulations to the new school board members that we have. So please, if you get a chance, tune into their meetings as well. Whether you have a grandchild or you don't have children in the district anymore, there are other things that the district does that can assist anybody in this community. They have adult classes. They have parent university. They have so many opportunities. Just plug into these meetings that are happening in our community. I also want to say thank you to our guests from Wind of the Spirit, Virilio, Diana, Adam. Thank you so much for speaking in regards to the human rights concerns and the immigrant and migrant rights, speaking towards the Immigrant Trust Act and directive. And thank you for clarifying, you know, where there was confusion. Because one thing we want to do is that we don't want to make anyone feel guilty for not understanding, but we do want to take the opportunity to make sure we're educating and influencing people around us. It's okay to disagree, but it's different when you disagree because you don't know. And so once you have the information, now you're able to make informed decisions. And so I really pray that we do take that approach in everything we do in life with all kinds of people in this world who come from different backgrounds. I also want to say thank you to Anna D. Banks. She is one of our county, I'll say, local entrepreneurs. She donated some books to Orange Public Library recently in regards to helping entrepreneurs and the youth get involved in creating their own businesses and finances. I also want to say thank you to Congresswoman La Monica McIver. I just attended a town hall in regards to our SNAP recipients and the conditions that basically what's going on in our communities right now as a state and as a country. A lot of people have lost access to their SNAP benefits. And we have to be honest about who's, who are the recipients. I feel that it's being weaponized and I feel like they're adding stigma to those who are actually utilizing these benefits to help them in their everyday lives. We have over thirty-three percent of senior citizens who rely on it. We have over thirty-one percent of 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 children who rely on it. And about seventeen percent of Americans who live with disabilities rely on it. So I don't think this is ever, I don't think anybody ever expected this out of this administration. And what I want to say is I do congratulate and I and I think our congressional leaders for being on the forefront, for coming back and trying to give us the information. And they're doing their due diligence to make sure that they don't bow out without fighting for our rights. They're making sure that they get what they need done so that they could come back to the state of New Jersey and say that we have resources for our communities because it's hard already. Let's be real honest. There's a lot of working people out there who are working two or three jobs. And yeah, they might have to go to the pantry or they might have to get a loan. And we're being squeezed, insurance, water bills, tax bills, all of the above. So what myself and a few local leaders are proposing is that we get together and we form a cooperative. We're trying to gather more volunteers so that we could do donations and do more things as a community. So if anybody is interested in helping us and working with us to service our community, our own people from within, please reach out to me. If you know anybody who needs more information about their SNAP benefits, they're not quite sure if they still have money on their card or not, they could go to newjerseyfamiliesfirst.com or they could call the eight-hundred number, Just to move a little forward, I want to inquire about the hospital site because that was a question and a couple of emails that I received. And I didn't hear the part about whether or not, whether or not tickets were issued. I didn't hear that part.
They said no.
No?
No.
Okay. So will there be a recent call?
The portion of the of this, there's a portion of the site that is owned by the developer and a portion that's owned by the city. And that portion which is owned by the city will be the subject of a cleanup that will be coming up towards the end of the fall before winter.
Okay.
And that portion which is owned by the developer will be reviewed by code enforcement. But one of the pieces is the parking lot across the street. And the other piece is to the east and is next to and in front of Ivy Court.
That's by the old funeral home.
It's where the old funeral home was.
Okay. Are we requiring them to do any boarding up or anything like that?
Most of the boarding up, there's a, there's a plan for a complete overhaul and inspection of the site. It's, it's a little more complicated than just going in and boarding up. There are a number of agencies that have to be involved in the sweep and before the boarding up can be done.
Okay. Council President, I have your permission to mention just two more things.
Go ahead, two more. Quickly.
I know you're counting. Quickly. All right. So I do want to say thank you to our county representative for coming here and mentioning the event is going to be taking place for tomorrow. I also want to mention that the West Ward is going to be having their next meeting on November thirteenth, which is next Thursday, at the Sanctification Assembly of God. That is the church on Hillside Avenue. I also want to mention that the West Ward will be having a Thanksgiving giveaway as well on November twenty-second at ten a.m. on Saturday at my office at one-seven-zero Scotland Road. And I also want to mention that the Church of the Oranges will be also giving out Thanksgiving dinners on Thanksgiving, November twenty-seventh. So if anybody's interested in participating. So if anybody's interested in participating, uh, please come out and bring a friend. Uh, and then my second thing.
That, that was five.
That was really fun.
That was, that was.
That's really fun.
We, we, we were. Thank, thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
In closing, I just ask that my council colleagues support all the ordinance and resolutions that I have sponsored for this evening. And I hope that we could continue to work as a team. And please remember, yes, I am a West Ward council member. And I understand that there are at-large council members, but please, let's work together as a team. If you know that there's something on, going on in our community, please bring it to me before we put anything on the agenda. Because I would also like to make sure that I am in support of your hard work and making sure that all of the residents had an opportunity to engage in the decisions that we make here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman, Council President?
Good evening, everyone. Sorry I was late. I had to attend a junior ROTC event in Bellatoria where I think, um, Ms. Alcantara told me it was a battalion of over a hundred, um, junior and high school students that received awards tonight for the ROTC. It was a great, great, great event. Got to speak to a lot of young people. I spoke to, she told me specifically to tell you, Councilman Montague, that she said hello, she had fun at your camp and she looks forward to it next year. Her name is Ms. Gang.
Yes, Alicia.
All right. Um, like I said, it was over a hundred, um, people in that battalion. She said they've gone from a troop to a battalion, so if.
Excuse me, Councilman, I'm sorry. Can you bring your, your mic a little closer? I do apologize.
So if you get any chance to, um, check them out anytime, they are fantastic. Uh, we see them a lot of times at the superintendent's back-to-school event. Councilwoman Easton is smiling. She knows that they're a great group of, um, men and women. And, um, they are, I'm sorry?
My nephew's there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's right. Yaya is one too. Um, and they were having a fantastic time. So it's always great to see young people having a good time doing something they, that they really enjoy and doing something, um, that they can enhance their lives with. And speaking to a lot of them, some people are going to the Navy, some people prefer the Army. And one little girl told me she was totally scared of the Marines. So, um, that was, um, really cool. I also want to thank everyone who participated in the election yesterday, whether you were a candidate, you're a voter, a poll worker, or just anybody that participated in that election. Uh, my family and I, we went to vote on Sunday, the last early voting day. And when we pulled into the parking lot, my twenty-year-old granddaughter said, "This looks like when we voted for President Barack Obama." Now, she didn't get to vote, but she voted with me every time, um, there was an election since she was four. So she went in the booth with me and she thought that she voted for President Bar- Barack Obama. Um, so when I say she's twenty years old, she was really excited about voting, um, for our new governor. She was really happy that, um, the governor-elect, Mikey Sherrill, won. I want to say on Saturday, I attended a rally in Newark where President Barack Obama was in the House. He is still a phenomenal orator, he is still a phenomenal, uh, speaker, he has the gift of gab. This lady was screaming at him that she loved him, um, and, and he, he told, "I didn't come to speak only to you." That's what he said. And then he said to her, something to her, and she said, he said to her, "Oh, you cute." And he turned his head and he turned back around. He said, "But Michelle is fine." And then he said, "You're fine too." But he's just talking to somebody or being in the crowd with somebody, um, that is a politician that has the gift of gab and that can, um, relate to everyday people. So that was amazing. I am very tired. I am campaigned out. So many rallies, putting up lawn signs, um, being at the polls, giving out literature. It's a hard job. Um, when spoke to Nikki Amos, she runs the Board of Elections. She, um, had the ability to give out jobs to young people. So when you went to the polls this year, you saw young people sitting in the polls. Um, and they were becoming experienced poll workers, which was really, really cool too. Um, and that is, no, we have Veterans Day coming up. Everybody knows my father was a POW in the Korean War. Uh, we honor our vets and we will see you, I think it's Monday? It is Monday, right? It's Monday at our new community center. So come on out and, um, help us honor our vets. Thank you so much, Council Vice President Montague.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilwoman Easton?
I, I just want to. ROTC is fun. The young men are enjoying it.
And women.
My nephew.
And women. And women.
I never thought he would want to do that.
To bring your mic down.
He's having so much fun and it's giving him so much structure. And, uh, he's learning a whole lot how to be more manly. So it's really good for him. Uh, I just want to say, um, real quickly, voting yesterday was exciting. Uh, I have visited all of my polling sites and the energy was like old times. We rewrote history yesterday. And I think they said that was the biggest turnout they had had since nineteen sixty-nine. But I mean, everybody was excited. They were having fun, they were laughing and it was not a lot of disgruntled people. But, um, one of the things we have to do better is we're going to run schoolboy candidates. We have to let people know who they are because it's all I heard. I don't know who these people are. I don't know who to vote for. So we need to get a, do a better job at having them, um, educate our residents on who they are and why they're running. But it was the young people that turned out, I was really shocked. So many of them was, had voted and we had a lot of early first-time voters, first-time voters, which was excellent. Uh, I don't know if, um, our, our clerk has the total number yet of how many people voted in Orange.
It's one, it's.
You want to share that real quick of how many? And I want to ask that Venice Administrator, can we put a list of the food bank locations on the website where people can get food? I think somebody sent it out. But can we list that on the, in, in light of what's happening with SNAP?
Yes.
Can we list that on the website? There's a lot of good, good places that's giving away a lot of good food so nobody should go hungry. And last Sunday, ShopRite did a ten-dollar bag promotion. And, uh, people were going up there getting them and all it needed was a turkey. So I got, one of my friends donated twenty bags that we're going to give out Thanksgiving once we get the turkeys to go in them. But that was a good event. Uh, and a quick question, three fifty Washington Street, has that been sold? I've been, I've been meaning to call and follow up.
Um, not that I'm aware of. I know they're in discussions.
Because I woke up one morning and he had cleaned that place like you wouldn't believe. I mean, it is really clean. All of the overgrowth is gone and it looked like overnight something miraculous happened. Somebody snapped their fingers and it just cleaned. But I also wanted to say that on, you know, when I first became a councilperson, I took, I got a, um, certificate in government from Rutgers University. But I needed to take a refresher course. So last, two Saturdays ago, I did another course with Rutgers just to make sure that we were doing the right thing and that nothing has really changed as far as the statues. And I want to have the clerk send everybody, I think Councilwoman Ross already has a copy of this, of this, I think it's online and she can print it if you want, or she'll send you the link. But I think everybody needs to read the powers and duties of a local elected official because some things that we do is not what we should be doing and some things we do, we are over, uh, stepping in line. Because it talks about government being, a purpose is not to cut costs because when you cut costs, you cut services. Its real purpose is to produce results that the citizens value. For example, improving their quality of life. And I also learned the difference between ordinance and resolutions and why it's critical that we do resolutions for law and policy. Because, I mean, ordinance, because resolutions are the feel-good legislation. It's really feel-good. We call it frivolous legislation because it really doesn't impact our residents in a way, it's make them feel good. And I think we're in the business to make sure that we, we do legislation that really is going to impact them, i.e. what they were talking about with immigrants tonight, because that is a quality of life. Um, but I just want to make sure that everyone gets a copy. And, um, if you can't sign up for the course because you, you get to be online with other municipalities and you can find out some of their thoughts and some of their things that they are going through, that we are going through. And it will help all of us to be better, um, council peo- council persons.
Yes.
And, um, and I think that's all I have.
That's it.
And I attended the opening of the community center in Orange, in Or- in Mount T. Irvin Park. And we met, met his daughter, Monte Irvin's daughter. She lives in South Orange. I didn't know she was so close. And we shared, we both worked for AT&T, so we shared that together. But that is a great facility. I'm just praying and hoping. Is Mr. Black still still here?
No.
That we take care of it, keep the grounds clean and that we don't let anybody deface that property. So we're going to keep talking about that. We got to make sure that we ride through there, make sure things are smooth, that things are going good. And our county sheriff has already said that he's going to be having them patrol that more often to make sure that we keep that property in pristine shape. And thank everybody that voted, everybody that went out to vote yesterday. The results were good.
Thank you so much.
And we prayed a lot.
Yes, we did. Last but not least, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, um, Vice President.
But.
Um, I just want to start off and, um, I want you guys to join me in congratulating again our new police chief, Brian Mooney. Congratulations. And I also want to talk about the election yesterday. It was a great election. Um, still a blue state. And I want to say congratulations to the three winners of the Orange Board election. But I, I hear everybody saying that, you know, it was a great turnout. It was good. It was that. I'm glad we got the results where you were looking for, but I just want to give these numbers to you, okay? We have over thirty thousand residents in this town, thirty thousand plus. We got eighteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight people, registered voters. Eighteen thousand four sixty-eight. And we got over thirty thousand residents in this town. And get this, you know how many voted yesterday? Fifty-two seventy-six, okay? Everybody's happy about that and I'm happy that we got the results we was looking for. But Orange, we got to do better, okay? We got to do better. Councilwoman Jamie Summers said earlier that if we don't have high numbers, uh, people don't respect Orange, okay? We will not get the funds that we need. We will not get anything because Orange does not vote, okay? We need to do better. And I have to say this, every time that we have voting, we need people to come out. We need to register more voters, okay? It's essential for us to get whatever we want. We have to vote. So I'm glad it turned out good for us yesterday, but we got to do better. And we talked about, you know, I, I sent the email to the administration about the SNAP benefits. A lot of people in Orange receive SNAP benefits. They haven't been reloaded on their card at this particular time. Lot of families are not going to have food, you know, to put on their table to feed their kids. And there's a lot of food banks all over in SS County, even right here in Orange. But if the seniors or anybody can't get to these food banks, it's not going to help them, okay? So I'm asking the administration, can they provide buses or to get these people to where they got to get food from? You know, even if it's to Lincoln Avenue, you know, but all over SS County. The, um, county executive just said that you can go to Orange Park tomorrow. Okay, Monte Irvin Park. You can go down to, um, Branchwood Park. Um, he gave us the date. But it's no good to us unless we have transportation to get these folks there. So I, I'm begging you guys to get some transportation. There's a lot of seniors that's going to need this, okay? But they have no way to get there. Um, I just need, um, an update from you, um, Chris. Um, you, I just heard Tensey talk about Washington Street where the development and new development is supposed to be, Lincoln Avenue and Taylor Street. I, I, I know that there has been some, some, um, wrote work done on Lincoln Avenue and some on Taylor, okay? But I haven't seen anything lately and I haven't seen anything on Washington. So you can just give me an update on those three locations and what's going on with them?
So Washington, Washington Street, the owner's in negotiations to sell the project and the property. Um, last I heard, he had two potential purchasers. Um, if that were to happen, it would come back before the board for an assignment. The environmental remediation at, uh, five ninety-five Lincoln has been completed. Um, applications are in for demolition. Um, and the building will be demolished before the onset of winter.
I, I saw on Lincoln, they, um, scraped the roof, you know, they had, um, what kind of roof was that up there they had?
It was asbestos shingles.
Okay. But if they're going to demolish that, why did they scrape the shingles off?
Because the environmental remediation requirements require all asbestos and other toxic materials to be removed prior to the demolition.
Okay, all right.
And as far as Taylor Street goes, um, as you mentioned, there's been demolition. Um, there was a complication with the property next door that's being dealt with.
Okay. And the next thing, um, an update on Highland Avenue Station.
I have to get back to you.
Okay. And do you have to get back to me about the gates in Seven Oaks?
What's your question?
I, I asked you about this two times now. Um, will these gates on the weekends be closed during the winter season?
So it's my understanding that a policy will be put forth by the administration, um, at the meeting in December.
Okay. And this, this question is regarding community benefits, but this, I'm addressing this to my, um, council members. We have millions of dollars in, um, community benefits. And, um, I'm asking you, Council President, can, we have a special meeting to discuss how we want to spend the community benefits, okay? We need to all be in agreement as to why we have them, how we have them and how we got to use them. And after we decide how we might want to use them, we can have some community forums, you know, to ask the community, what do they think and how we should spend them. So, um, I would like to have a special meeting if you don't mind.
That's fine. Thank you.
And my last thing is budget. Are we working on budget workshops from the departments at this time?
Working on budget worksheets from.
Worksheets, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, they're due on November fourteen.
Great. And I think the last time I asked you, you know, for a plan as to how we're going to move forward with this twenty-twenty-six budget. Yeah, but I haven't seen anything yet.
Well, I told you that we would start to have that discussion at the end of November, the beginning of December. And we would do it in small groups so that people could be informed before we had a public forum.
Okay. And the last thing I just want to talk about is, um, one of my favorite restaurants, um, La Bredy's is in discussions to be knocked down, okay, for a new development. Tomorrow, Thursday, November the sixth, from six p.m. to seven thirty p.m., they're having a forum to discuss what's going on there. Okay, so anybody is available, come out, ask any questions you have and be informed as to what's going to happen there. And that's all I have, Council Vice President.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Uh, I'll be brief. First thing I want to talk about, uh, what's the status with the Joyce Carnegie Park? I see it's all cleaned up now. When are we going to start some movement on that?
So we're having the, um, architect draw up some plans. We've received some plans from the developer. Um, we wanted to make. We wanted to make changes to scale back some of those plans, um, so we're waiting on the final set of plans.
Okay. And as far as, are we still a go for the parking, um, utilities on, uh, the beginning of the year?
Yes.
Okay. And of course, Mooney, this is a great man. We got a great chief. I'm proud. Now, this goes out, well, let me, let me talk to Chris. We need to have a meeting so we can get this permit parking under control. You know, I haven't put any legislation up because I don't know. Do, do we need it? Do we need to have a meeting to figure this out? How are we gonna go forward with this?
I think that, um, while the administration and the people who are going to be working for the utility are completing their study, they will come back to you with recommendations, and at that time, it would be appropriate to have a meeting.
Cause we have two pieces of legislation tonight.
I understand. Even, even if the legislation tonight passed, that'll just be part of the study. So the recommendations will be what the recommendations are after the study's complete.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council was first.
I'm just changing gears. Can you back up? You said the park is gonna be scaled backed? The plan's gonna be scaled, can, can, can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah.
Let's go back.
The design that was originally submitted by the developer's architect was way over the top. It included, elevated planters with seating, required an irrigation system.
Okay.
Um, it had, uh, excess lighting. It had trees in places where they weren't appropriate. So we needed to have it reviewed and have it scaled back a little bit.
Seeing this, alright, I get it. Alright, thank you.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Yes, um, piggybacking, I need clarification, cause we actually have three ordinance for permit parking. We also have Nassau Street here.
Right.
So, uh, yeah, that's Nassau Street. So you said even though we pass this legislation tonight, we actually won't be able to implement anything until after the study?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay.
I said, should the legislation pass, it will still be part of the study. So when the study's recommendations come in, they may be different. Doesn't stop you from considering the legislation. Just means that when the study's complete.
There may be alterations.
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. I have one more.
No, uh.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, as far as the, the YMCA Recreation Center, where are we standing with that?
Um, as I indicated, we should have a redevelopment agreement before the council in December.
And all plans will still go as far as the Rec Center?
Yes.
Okay.
Council Vice President? I think.
Yes.
Oh.
What'd you say?
Yeah, going back to permit parking, the Lord Department was supposed to amend it because until they amended, it specifically says border streets. So even if you pass permit parking, it's illegal because it's not on a border street.
That's why I brought that up.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so.
Right.
It was not on a border street, and yesterday we were trying to figure out Nassau Street. Are we going all the way past the gym? On Nassau Street, all the way to the West Orange?
West Orange border, cause we can't wait for West Orange any longer, so we're going.
So, but you're just doing the, all the way?
From Scotland, Nassau, to the West Orange border.
Yeah, so that's a border street.
Right.
Because it borders West Orange.
And West Orange.
The agenda.
They did permit all by South Valley, so like, the, the entire parking area near South Valley, they made permit. So we were waiting for West Orange, but I can no longer, I can no longer wait for them.
But that's a border street, so that was in within the guidelines of what's legislated already because it's a border street. Did, uh, so what do they do when they have events at their gym? Cause I thought.
When they have a big at their gym, they, I'm sorry.
We, we're gonna keep it going.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna say they have a parking lot.
Okay.
They have a parking lot.
Thank you.
Alright.
Okay. The recommendations for this evening was ordinance on first reading seventy dash twenty twenty-five be postponed, and resolution four sixty-five dash twenty twenty-five be taken off the consent agenda for a separate fold.
Which one?
Four sixty-five dash twenty twenty-five.
And seventy dash twenty twenty-five is postponed?
Postponed.
Council Vice President? I'm gonna remove thirty-two twenty twenty-five.
Thirty-two?
Pulling it?
Like this on the, um.
Cause a young man is not here?
Say one more time, thirty-two. You remove.
It's on old business post.
And also four fifty-two twenty twenty-five.
Four fifty-two twenty twenty-five.
Pulling that?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. Ordinance is on second reading. An ordinance to amend fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, chapter two hundred entitled Vehicles and Traffic, to change traffic patterns on Claremont Terrace, terrace sponsored by Councilmember Jamie Summers Johnson. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Good evening, uh, once again, Brendan Gold, one seventy-four Haywood Avenue. Um, I do, uh, understand the evening that they have on Claremont Terrace, and I do hope that it does pass. Um, because for me, on tree, on, on, uh, Haywood Avenue, after three o'clock until sometime after six, I don't go down to South Center Street if I am going into any other direction than towards Seton Hall University because it just backs up all the way through, and I just can't get through. So in that instance, I would just go up, crossover hax, and then go down Tremont. That's the same thing that they're looking to do. My only concern, shh, is that uh, when you close off the street, that how will you take care of whatever traffic, uh, comes down the street? But then wishes to somehow like turn around? That would be my only concern. I mean, for me, not a problem. I got a little tiny car on Haywood Avenue. If I'm on the curb, I can go right around. No K-turn, no nothing, just a straight U-turn right off the curb. On that street, it, believe it's a little bit more narrow. So I'm just concerned. K-turns are fine with me. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm just looking at that concern. That's all. But I hope it does pass.
Thank you, Ms. Angel. Anyone else?
Motion to close citizens' comments?
Second, Montague.
Motion to close citizens' comments was made by Councilwoman Easton, second by Councilman Montague, the third. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion adopted. Is there a motion?
Motion, Summers Johnson.
Second, Coley.
Motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman Coley. On the motion.
Council Vice President? Do you, to, uh, Councilwoman Summers Johnson, you're turning that into a one-way going up now, right?
Yes, there's no outlet, basically.
Right, so it's not blocking it, you're just making it a one-way going up.
Well, we have, we're gonna have to block it. You're not gonna be able to enter or exit from South Center.
It's gonna be two-way.
It's gonna be basically a two-way. They'll have to turn around, but they can't, you can't go up or down. I mean, you won't be able to go in or out from South Center.
Okay.
Anyone else on the motion? Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
That's seven yeas, this motion just ordinance has passed. Ordinance fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, chapter two hundred entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, three forty-five, South Jefferson Street. Are there any citizens who wish to comment?
Motion to close citizen comments?
Second.
Motion to close citizens' comments was made by Councilman Ross, second by Councilwoman Easton. All those in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion adopted. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Easton, second by Councilman Montague the third. On the motion. Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross? Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Council Wooten? Excuse me? Where, where, um?
Fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
That's seven yeas. This ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance sixty dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Orange Township, chapter two hundred entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, twenty, two hundred twenty-four, Washington Street. Are there any citizens who wish to comment?
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close citizens' comment was made by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion, is, uh, all those in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted. Is there a motion?
Motion, Coley.
Second. Hilbert.
Point of order, I'm sorry, Council, uh, Vice President, which one, which?
Sixty dash twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Sixty, right?
Sixty.
Six zero.
Six zero dash twenty twenty-five.
Washington Street.
Okay. On the motion. Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
That's seven yeas, motion adopted. Ordinance sixty-two dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance amending chapter eighty-eight, fees article one, fees derived from code provisions, section eighty-eight dash one, schedule of fees, setting rates and fees for use of the water sewer system as initially established by ordinance number fifty-eight dash twenty thirteen, and as amended by ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty seventeen, forty-three dash twenty twenty-one, twenty-six dash twenty twenty-four, and fifty-four dash twenty twenty-four. Are there any citizens who wish to comment?
Motion to close citizen comments?
Second, Montague.
Motion to close citizens' comments was made by Councilman Ross, second by Councilman Montague the third. All those in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion adopted. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt?
Second, Coley.
Motion to adopt was made by Councilwoman Easton, second by Councilman Coley. On the motion. Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Abstain.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
No.
That's five yes, one abstain, and one no. Motion pass. Ordinance on first reading, sixty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance of the city of Orange Township, chapter two hundred entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section two hundred dash ten dot two, residential parking permit on Nassau, sponsored by, submitted by Councilmember Jamie Summers Johnson. Can I get a motion to adopt on first reading?
Motion to adopt?
Second, Ross.
Motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman Ross. On the motion. Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes, Nassau, she, yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
That's seven yeas, this ordinance is adopted on first reading. Ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to amend chapter two hundred dash thirty-three and chapter two hundred dash fifty-two dot three of the city of Orange Township code, Fairview Ave., sponsored by Councilmember, uh, Quantavia L. Hilbert. Is there a motion on first reading, to adopt on first reading?
Motion to adopt on first reading?
Second, Hilbert.
Motion to adopt by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, seconded by Councilwoman Hilbert. On the motion?
Uh, on, on the motion. Um, question. We already know this is not a border street. Are we just gonna, you know, I'm conflicted with this because it's definitely not a border street. It's from Lincoln Avenue to, uh, what is the height, uh, Scotland Road. It's not a border street. So I don't, I'm, I don't know, you know, I would abstain personally, okay, because.
So I do wanna bring it to your attention that, um, not only is it border, it's probably one block away from West Orange, and then we also have the train station there. And then we also have the new development that's happened on Lincoln and Highland. And there are homeowners who don't have driveways on that block. And there's apartment buildings with no parking.
Council Vice President? Council Vice President?
Yes, sir.
In reading, or at least it's been brought to my attention with respect to the ordinance currently on the books for, um, the city of Orange, it doesn't appear that border streets is actually even mentioned in the ordinance or in the code, making it a non-issue, at least the way I read it, so.
Thank you, attorney. Could we, um, could we get the number for that so we could pull it up and it could be disseminated to all the council members after this meeting?
So, Council Vice President, so what I just heard from our attorney is that permit parking was not designed for border streets?
At least not the way that the, our current ordinance reads, which is, um, section one forty-two, well, it's under Part Two general legislation, but specifically section one forty-two dash three B permit parking, subsections A, I'm sorry, subsections one A and one B.
So, so why have we been all of this time under the assumption that permit parking was only designed for border streets?
Well, Councilman Ross, I, I asked the same question. I asked you guys the same question, and no one ever.
Through all the years.
No one ever produced anything to back you, you guys voting no on it. I've been asking this question for about two and a half years. You guys never presented anything that said that we could not have it.
Well.
No, I'm, I'm not ju, I'm not being accused, I can't even get the word out. Yeah, accusatory. I, I'm just saying, like, this is a lesson where I say, we might believe something, but if you don't have the actual black and white in the facts, then it, we have to go back and do the research. Cause now the residents, they're the ones that have been suffering with no parking. And it puts a wedge between our relationship as colleagues when we're not hearing each other out.
But I also wanna comment on something you said that Fairview Avenue, you know I live on Fairview, okay?
I do, and what's your parking regulations in front of your house?
Don't worry about mine.
Uh-huh.
But, uh, Fairview Avenue, I go down that street every day. They have parked their driveways. They have long driveways where three, four cars can park in their driveway. You said, no, but they don't have driveways. They do. Every last house on that street has a driveway. Every one.
Not everyone.
Everyone, I'm telling you, I just went down there yesterday and I took her with me.
And the apartment building has a, has a parking lot also.
Which one?
The one on the right, if you go.
Lincoln, Lincoln and Fairview. And the one on the corner, Scotland and Fairview.
So, again, when you go down, not all of them have parking. And on top of that, there are some who are tenants and they're not given parking spaces. But I like your argument. At least you have one. Last time, you just said no.
It's not an argument, it's a fact.
No, I mean, uh, argument. That means that was your response. That is a debate. This is a conversation.
City Attorney never said. Anything against it?
Council Vice President?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just wanna clear the record. Everybody didn't say that it was for border streets. So, it's been, it wasn't all of us that said that.
When I said it, I'd admit I said it because that's.
Councilwoman Easton, I'm not gonna argue. When you use the word all in standard English language, it means all of us. And I'm just saying, all of us didn't say it. I'm just trying to correct the record, that's all.
Council Vice President, what are we doing next? Are we moving forward?
Now, is, is there also an engineer study for that street?
We don't have that.
You don't need it.
We don't need that.
So, we don't need it. Alright, let's go.
Okay, anyone else on the motion? Alright, roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
No.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
That's five yeas, one abstain, and one no. This ordinance passes. Ordinance seventy dash twenty twenty-five. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, chapter two hundred, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicapped parking spaces, five seventy-six Langdon Street. The recommendation is to postpone this ordinance. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Postpone?
Second.
Motion to postpone by Councilwoman Jamie Summers Johnson, and second by Councilman Montague the third. On the motion. Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten? That's seven yeas, this will be postponed. We, we are postponing this until the December the second meeting? Yes.
Is that enough time where you get what you need? Remember you were saying about.
It's what they need.
You have enough time to get what you need, BA?
I'll check with Marty.
Okay.
We should be able to deal with it.
Alright.
One second, okay. Alright. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. We have one resolution being, um, pulled for a separate vote. Anyone else?
Yes, um, four sixty.
Anyone else? Okay, the consent agenda consists of four sixty-one, four sixty-two, four sixty-three, four sixty-four, four sixty-six, four sixty-seven, four sixty-eight, four sixty-nine, four seventy, four seventy-one, four seventy-two, four seventy-three as amended, four seventy-four, four seventy-five, and four seventy-six. Is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second, Montague.
Motion by Councilwoman Hilbert, second by Councilman Montague the third. On the motion. Council, a roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
That's seven yeas. Consent agenda has been adopted. Resolution four sixty dash twenty twenty-five. A resolution, a resolution approving the bill list for council meeting vote on November the fifth dated October twenty-ninth, and approving checks issued by the Finance Department in accordance with ordinance two dash ninety-five. Grand total, four million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt, Summers Johnson?
Second, Montague.
Motion, motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman Montague the third. On the motion?
On the motion. Um, to you, BA, or to the CFO. On page five, I, I just noticed that there's hotel accommodations for the former, uh, police chief. Is that for the League of Municipality? Or is that was for something else?
Something previous. They went to a conference earlier this year. It's from a previous expenditure from earlier this year.
Okay.
Anyone else on the motion? Roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Yes.
That's seven yeas, motion is, is adopted. Um, resolution four sixty-five dash twenty twenty-five. Resolution supporting the New Jersey State Immigrant Trust Act, ITA, S three six seven two dash eight A four nine eight seven, sponsored by Councilmember Quantavia L. Hilbert. Is there a motion?
Motion, Summers Johnson?
Second, Hilbert.
Motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilwoman Hilbert. On the motion?
Council Vice President?
Yes.
This resolution, um, because of another job that I have, I am going to have to abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the motion? Council, let's roll call, Councilman Coley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilman Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wooten?
Abstain.
That's. Six, six, well, six yeas, one abstain, this motion passes. There are no, uh, is there any new business?
No.
No walk-on resolutions or other pending business, no old business. Is there a motion?
Motion to close.
To adjourn? To adjourn? A motion by Councilwoman Summers Johnson, second by Councilman. We just, should they pull them? They pull them.
But then we have to close out thirty-two and forty-two.
They pull them.
We pull them?
They pull them.
Okay.
Second by Councilman Coley. All those in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, adjourned at nine thirty-two. Alright, next meeting is Monday, November seventeen.